All right, Chris, you're shooting, you ready? All right, welcome back everybody to our Monday, December sixteenth briefing of the Mason County Commission. We just entered our closed session for labor discussions and we're moving into a discussion with Superior Court, Patty McGuire, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, deja vu all over again. This, the item before you, we discussed last week, which is converting the or ending the annual contract for Court Commissioner and making it a regular county employee, which for all intents and purposes, it has been for some time. Happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, if you don't mind, I'm gonna jump in forward. So Patty, I'm sorry I missed you when I know you came by to talk to me and stuff. I'm gonna try to explain it briefly and simply as I can. This position, if you remember some years back, we had a situation where we went to legislature, we actually got an extra body and all extra judge with the idea that was gonna alleviate the compression of how many we had to deal with. So then we ended up with a contract and now all of a sudden we're talking, we've been talking full time, which I didn't catch, we're giving benefits everything to until just recently. But here's what's in front of me right now. It is a creation of a position, the largest position and biggest position outside the elected in the whole county. And there's no process. For me to be comfortable with this, it has to be a complete process that we go through in order to do this. We don't just cancel a contract and say, here you go, you are now a full-time employee because everybody's entitled to apply for that position, including our, I'm not saying he ever would, and I've never even talked about it, but our chief deputy prosecuting, you know, chief deputy prosecutor, prosecutor attorney, or maybe others. This is a big deal. And just removing it and going from being not an employee to an employee is more than I can handle without that process. I am not saying no, what I am saying is it's time to bring in HR and everything else. I understand with HR, we're going through some issues right now with family and stuff. And we have to be patient, but I'm just not comfortable creating the largest, highest paid position in the county on a whim. That's where I'm at.
Commissioner, I would point out two things. One is there has been a Court Commissioner in Mason County since the nineties. This started as a part-time position, it has been full-time for five plus years. We did a recruitment for the position since Commissioner Butler was elected to the court. We did this, this fall, did a full recruitment, worked with HR. It was like recruiting any other position. We had twenty some applicants interviewed by the three judges. We went through a full hiring process and worked very closely with HR and they were great to work with, so. I would not describe this as a win.
No, what I'm describing as win is the idea of making it into an actual full-time position with retirement and everything through the county, the highest paid position we would have on our books with just a weekend, a week thing for coming before us and just saying, okay, we'll just change your contract to an employee. I'm saying that there needs to be a full process for it with an advertised as such out there as a full-time and even the look of whether we should do that. But that's, I'm one commissioner, but that's where my, my issue came up when we were doing it, it just felt so inappropriate. I couldn't even quite put my finger on it. I just have been here so long, I just never created a position in that manner. And then I started thinking of the reason why is because it's probably not the way to create a position. So that's where I'm standing on it, Commissioner.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it, I think probably long-term it should be a regular position. I don't, I don't think there's an issue with that. I would be comfortable approving it based on the process that you all have gone through already. That said, there's no tiebreaker here today. So my question then would turn to, in the interim, do you have what you need to continue with this contracted commissioner position into the new year and then you're gonna revisit it at that point with the commission? When there's a full commission here, do you have what you need in order to have that spot filled?
Well, no, I mean, we, there is not a, there is not a contract, I mean, we can, we can re redo the contract that we had with Tersa Butler for Jason Ken. And, but it has to be approved by the commission. And so no, but we can start that process. It's just gonna be tough with the holidays.
Well, he said for myself, I can't, I cannot be okay with creating the whole position personally. I need to go through more of a process and I think it needs to be an absolute public process of creating the position than advertising for the position publicly as a with retirement as the whole nine yards and others that are internal, they want to apply for that, they may not. But the idea that we just do it and we appoint somebody into that position, just, I'm just uncomfortable with that. And with that, I can't, I can't put a vote to say yes to that.
The, the position has had benefits since, full benefits since the nineties. That, that was the purpose for having a contract. And so it is for all intents and purposes, a regular county position. When we recruited for it, it went through the, the whole process. We did have internal candidates, internal county candidates applying. So this wasn't a secret.
So Patty, let me ask you a question. And again, I feel bad for throwing a person's name into the bus because we've never even had a discussion about it, but I'm just looking at the whole picture. Let's just say that Tim wanted to apply before, if he had before under the under the contract, he would not have been subject to being able to have retirement and everything else out of that. It's a contract.
The, the position has full benefits, including retirement.
Including person stuff?
Yes.
Okay, well, I need to hear that. Do we have anybody from HR?
Randy, yes, this position does get all benefits. The only difference between it and it's nickel.
Yeah, no, I got you. Thank you. It does have personal retirement and everything too, huh?
Yes.
Commissioner, if you look at the, in, in the packet, section four of the current contract says commissioner shall be eligible for all benefits available to Mason County employees within chapter six and seven of the Mason County personnel policies.
And so Nicole, you still on?
I'm here, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. And you may not even be the right person to ask this. When we create a position, is there a requirement from us to go out publicly to fill the position? Or can we do like we're doing now? We have somebody, we create a position and just put them in?
I mean, as you bring it up, I mean, it does make sense, this other contract is ending and when I was talking to Tim about this, having it reviewed, I mean, we both looked at it, it looked like it should be a position, but I mean, it does make sense that if this was a contract that's ending and it's going out as a new position that we would, I mean, it is an appointed position, but I do think that we do need to advertise for it. Unfortunately, I mean, as you're pointing it out, does make sense that way. Unless there was something that I missed that happened previous to that, but if this contract's ending and we're starting a whole new position, I think that you probably do have to give everybody else a chance as well to try and get into that position.
We, we did just have a recruitment.
Okay, see, that's.
You didn't have a position to, Patty, you still don't have a position to recruit. Mark, where are you? Can you help me out with some back and forth on this?
You know, I think that they were, I think that from what I hear Patty saying is they were, they went through a recruitment process to fill what was the original contract. Right? The contract that we've had in place for, for years apparently. It does look like the salary associated with this position is eighty-five percent of a Superior Court judge, so it wouldn't be this exact same thing. And, and I'm sorry, I was not aware that you went through the recruitment process, Patty, and I didn't, I didn't know that. I mean, was that something that we did, like advertised on Neo Gov and everything and?
It, I mean, the recruitment did not even say it was a contract position. I mean, it said it was recruited as a regular county employee position. Because it's been that effectively for thirty years.
Yeah. Jen, did you have some additional info?
Yes, so I did want to let you know that we do include this position as part of our FTE account and we budget it like it is a normal county position.
Yeah.
Okay, so today's one of those days, I wish Mary was here because she'd be the final one to tell me on this. I'm semi comfortable all the way around, but again, the question that comes back to me is the proper way to do it, if we create a position next Monday or Tuesday, tomorrow or whatever.
Tomorrow.
Are we actually in a position where we create the largest position we've ever had at the county? The highest wages and stuff like that and not have to go out after it's created to the public? We can just literally appoint somebody without going out to the public after the position is created. If you tell me that we can and we're comfortable, I will move forward with this.
So I mean, I think there's examples of how that's worked in other departments. I mean, I don't know that we had a full application process for undersheriff or, I mean, not, at least not that I recall. And I mean, so I don't know, does it come down to?
Under sheriff is a little bit, I, I follow you, but under sheriff is a little different, that is literally without, it's not, it's closer, it's not the same.
Well, I just, in terms of having of, of, of somebody who's an appointee of an elected in that regard. So I mean, I, like I said, I mean, I feel like this is always, I think this is just a I think it's a pretty straightforward thing. It's already being treated as a FTE.
But it's not filled. Is Chris available? Nicole, is Chris on? He's, he's our HR without Mary.
Not sure, but.
I think Mark is our HR without Mary.
So, so I think that, I think that what, I guess if you're looking for a decision on this, Randy, the proper process would have been create the position first and then do the recruitment process that it sounds like they did go through. So the, as far as, as what I hear Patty saying and Nicole, that they actually did advertise this as a position. They got applicants, they went through the process of interviewing. And, and so I think that the, the only thing that we missed is that we didn't come to the commission first and say, hey, we're gonna take this position that we always have had as a contract in the past and make it an employee of the county officially. Sounds like Jen has it budgeted as an employee. So all these things exist already, Commissioner Nedlin, I would say that probably the, the easiest way to move forward on this would be to allow the, the position to be created tomorrow so that they can actually fill it for the individuals start January.
Hey, I'm gonna go ahead and agree to do that, but I have a caveat. I want to get a buy-in from that also from Tim, so would you mind calling Tim? We'll put it on the agenda now. If Tim says no, then it's gonna be a no tomorrow.
But I can, I can do that.
Absent of that.
I don't want to speak for Tim, but he, he knows about this, that, that should be a very short phone call.
Well, we'll find out because it's just my concerns, because everybody gets together in the room, doesn't mean you understood my concern or even had a discussion regarding my, my concern, Patty. So, you know, if you're telling me that you actually had that discussion, it's like, okay, hey, we're changing this from a, from a contract to such and such, do we need to go out, do we need to do this process? But absent of that, I'll just hear it from Tim. And if he's okay with that and he doesn't see that we're going outside of our process, then I will be supportive of it tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you.
I just asked him if he has a minute to jump on the Zoom, so maybe if he, if he's able to.
Let's see.
This morning, we can maybe handle it.
Yep.
Some point later on in briefings.
I don't see him yet.
Yeah, I'm not sure that he is available to judge that.
Okay.
Just something to keep an eye out for, so we can.
So we'll go ahead and go on to the next. We'll go on to the next thing. Patty, you have anything else for us?
That's it.
Okay, so right now it is on the agenda, decisions will be made tomorrow and we based upon that, so thank you. Next up, support services, Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a Jen Barley Show today.
Hi Jen, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. So the first thing that I have for you is the levy certification. We had the North Mason Regional Fire Authority, they turned in their bond. They've made a decimal point error, it should have been five hundred and eighty thousand instead of five point eight million. And so we need to do a recertifying of the levies, so I would like to ask that we put that on tomorrow to get it over with.
Okay, Kevin?
All good with getting it over with.
Okay, as am I. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Perfect, thanks. The next thing that I have for you is a budget movement of salaries from operating to salaries for Belfer Sewer in excess of the fifteen thousand. So I think they're gonna need more than that fifteen thousand that we allow for a budget movement, even with the budget amendments tomorrow. I think they're gonna need probably an additional, up to an additional twenty-five thousand, and so that's what we're asking for. So I would like to ask that we put that on the amendment for, or the action agenda for tomorrow, not the budget amendment. It doesn't have to go through the.
So let me clarify for myself what you're saying. In this one thing you're, because the way it's set up, they're allowed to do fifteen thousand, so you're asking for twenty-five, they're allowed to do fifteen thousand without coming to the commission. They can come to the commission, it's not hearing nothing, the commission can agree. So are you asking for twenty-five thousand above or are you asking for ten thousand above?
I'm asking for twenty-five thousand above, so a total of forty thousand. I don't think they're gonna quite need that much, but I don't think the fifteen is going to be enough. And Stephanie did an analysis also, and I think she thought that they would need roughly thirty thousand, so instead of.
I'm comfortable with that, I just wanted to verify. Kevin, are you comfortable?
I am.
Okay, what else you got?
The last thing that I have are the November financials, so I'll share my screen. Can't get to the sheet that I need. Hold on just a minute. Going a little bit here.
So Jennifer, just so you know, I have copied all your stuff and, you know, Mark has been working with our neighbor, trying to help them in a situation where, and I've been working with our neighbor Grace Harper as well, and I have actually hope you don't mind, but I've delivered all your work to them to show them how by doing it in this manner, the commission can be completely up to date on what's happening, what the trends are, where it's coming up short, and I explained everything that you've been doing. So I hope you don't mind if you see your work show up at the next county.
Oh, that's perfect. I am happy to share. If they want the Excel version, let me know.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. So revenues, starting on page two, revenues for the general fund are, we received so far through November, forty-four million, five hundred thirty-four thousand. And we're at ninety-nine percent of our budgeted revenue for the general fund compared to last year, forty-three million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand roughly. And we were at a hundred and one percent of our budgeted revenue last year.
So on the, on the emergency management, do you know, I know it's not a huge amount, but I see that, where are the differences there?
I know that they had some grants budgeted that maybe didn't come in all the way. I'm glad that they have a little more budget authority available and operating because I think they might need it in their salaries. So we increased their overtime by eleven thousand for the budget amendment tomorrow. But they are going to definitely be right up to it at the end of the year and we might need to move, you know, maybe a thousand dollars over to salaries. So I can, I can research that a little bit more and let you know exactly.
I was just wondering if you, if you knew, I'm just looking at the things that are standing out. You know, non-departmental is what it is, always is what it is.
When some of these, some of these revenues may not come in one twelfth every month, right? So I can look into that, the, the emergency management one and see if we're expecting to receive another payment at the end of the year.
Thank you.
So the treasures revenue detail on pages three and four, so in the treasurer's office, we have received thirty million, two hundred and seven thousand so far this year compared to last year, twenty-nine million, eight hundred and eight thousand. And we're at a hundred and three percent of our budgeted revenue this year compared to a hundred and five percent last year. So everything looks pretty, pretty comparable for the treasurer's revenue. The expenditures for the general fund, we have expended forty-four million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand so far this year compared to forty million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand last year. We're eighty-four percent of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to eighty-five percent last year. The special fund revenues. Most, most things are up, we have our community development revenue is up over the previous five years. Property taxes are up over last year. Sales tax is still up, so that's good. Filings are up, which is surprising. And then lodging tax continues to go up and REIT is up. And Kevin had a question, Commissioner Shutey had a question about the REIT and when, when we received that, and I talked to Lisa this morning and that's pretty much no lag, like the sales tax we receive in, in a two-month lag because it goes directly to Department of Revenue first and then they distribute to the counties where REIT comes from the title companies directly to the county and is deposited on a daily basis. And then uploaded to Munis on a weekly basis. The sales tax we have received so far through November, nine million, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars and we're on track to receive over nine point eight million. We budgeted nine point two million this year. So that's looking very, very good, very steady. The six-year financial recap, so our cash balance is twenty-seven million, six hundred and nine thousand right now. You can see all of our reserves here. We budgeted twenty-six point six million as our beginning fund balance for January and I think that looks like a pretty good number. We again are at ninety-nine percent of our budgeted revenue in the general fund and eighty-four percent of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund. In the special funds, we have sixty-five million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand in cash. And that's up over the previous five years. So most, most of our special funds are looking pretty healthy right now. The motor pool summary, we're at seventy percent of our budget. We have expended so far this year, one million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. And last year at this time, we were at one million, three hundred and forty thousand.
Because we didn't have as many retrofits this year, is that what that was?
Well, we have more leased vehicles now and so the next couple of years, you'll see that, that cost will increase. I mean, we budgeted one point nine million this year. And last year we had budgeted one point seven, some of our vehicles have not come in. And so, so yeah, this number will, will go up a little bit next year as those vehicles come in. As we don't have as many owned vehicles. Or outright owned, I should say. The special fund revenues, we have received fifty-six million, ninety-six thousand, but ninety compared to last year, fifty-four million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, we're eighty-seven percent of our budgeted revenue in the special funds this year compared to ninety-one percent last year. And the special fund expenditures, we have expended forty-eight million, seven hundred and three thousand this year compared to forty-nine million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand last year. And we're at sixty-five percent of our budget this year compared to sixty-five percent last year. Which is very unusual for the special funds to be that close, since they do you know, carry inconsistencies from year to year, just because there's more capital in our special funds than there is in the general fund, that sort of thing. The county debt at the end of November was sixteen million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So any questions on this or anything that you want me to get back to you on?
Nope, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
I'll tell you, I, just so you know, every single week, I always take your words out of the book. So I have it to work with on a regular basis. I appreciate everything you do and how well this is laid out.
Great, thank you. I'm glad that it's useful.
Commissioner Shutey, do you have anything for Jim?
I do not. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, it looks like Tim jumped on, can we, can we go back and have Tim kind of give some input into this? Thanks for jumping on, Tim. Did you, are you aware of what we're talking about?
Sort of.
So Patty McGuire in Superior Court came to ask if the Court Commissioner position could be changed from a, oh, there he is.
Yeah.
From a contract position to an employee.
Yeah, Mark, let me ask him, because it's based on my question, Tim. I'm, I'm having an issue because I, it's not how we have done it normal. And we've agreed to put it on the agenda and go with it, if you're okay with it. So here's the situation that I'm dealing with. We're creating an absolute, brand-new position that, that's on the budget, the largest one we have in the county. And I'm wondering if we have to go through a process, if we do it to, to hire, or can we just ignore all that and go with what they've done in the past based on it after, before the position is even created?
So historic, here's what I know, historically, it's been a contract position that has basically treated the contractor as an employee. They get a certain contract rate, but they also received all the benefits of an employee. Is that right, Patty?
Yes, sir.
And this year, they wanted to change that from a contracted position to a regular full-time employee, right? And that probably should have happened before they hired somebody before an FTE existed. I understand that that just, we kind of got the cart in front of the horse, as I see it. However, I do understand that it was an open and public process to recruit, right, Patty?
Yes.
We've hired somebody as an employee and they've relied on our offer and it's been accepted, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I'd be hard-pressed as the county lawyer to yank that away from somebody that's relied on that offer and the acceptance of that offer.
Okay, so if you're comfortable with it and doing it like it is, because like I said, to me, it just seemed inappropriate to do it in the manner we did it.
Am I comfortable with it? I think it is what it is. And I think you have one decision only to make, that's, sometimes you have two bad decisions and I think you gotta make the best decision of the not greatest decisions.
Okay, well, if you're comfortable with it and we can defend it, then I'm, I'm supportive and I'll go.
Yeah, comfortable, that's a relative term.
Yeah, no, I know what you, I know what you meant. Well, I'm only, can only ask you for the best you can give us.
That's, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, we should, before this office would ever hire somebody, we'd make sure we had an FTE before we hired somebody.
Yeah, but where, where, where we're at and we're gonna move forward with your blessings for what we have.
If my blessing counts for anything, I think, I think the appropriate thing would be to continue on with the offer and the acceptance of who we, who we've made the offer to. And it sounds like it went through a public process and I think if anybody wanted to apply, they had plenty of opportunity to apply and I think that's the best course of action.
Okay, that's where we're at.
All right.
Thank you, thank you for jumping on.
Yeah, thanks Patty.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye.
All right, Mark, what else you got?
That's all.
What have I got? Commissioner Shutey, do you have anything?
I do not.
I don't either, I'm trying to think anything on schedules. With Christmas, it's all over the place, so I have no idea.
Not, nothing between now and tomorrow morning when we, we meet again.
Yeah.
Schedule-wise.
Although I'll probably see everyone, all right, then I will entertain.
Now, we have public works.
Yep. Yep.
Commissioner, Commissioner Shutey's, for Commissioner Shutey's last regular hearing, right? That's tomorrow, that's all. That's what his schedule looks like for the rest of the year.
That's right.
Loretta, what you got?
Look at that big smile. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, so first up, we have a request to authorize the director to sign an ILA extension with the city of Bremerton and the Port of Bremerton. This is our continuing ILA. And um, since we're still in discussions about um sewer service, I um ask Commissioners for your approval to sign this ILA.
We automatically know, especially, we still haven't received their million dollars or anything from them. Uh, I'm still an absolute no.
Okay.
What would you have liked to receive their million dollars for, Commissioner?
Uh, in, in the original proposal and everything we've signed, they were supposed to provide us with that money.
For what?
For the planning, for everything we've done up until this point. Uh, read, read the contract. Again, that's not gonna change. So we, you and I can argue, but it's not gonna change. They still never provided what they promised, and I'm still not supportive of it.
Well, one more for the road, I guess.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm not gonna give, I mean, I'm not gonna argue with you. I mean, I think, I think there has been nothing for the city of Bremerton to expend their million dollars on to this point. I think the fact that they'd like to continue in a, with a planning ILA is a good practice for us. I think it continues us, you know, down the discussion path with them with, with limited liability on the county side. And uh, I would encourage the commission to uh consider signing this in January when the new commission convenes. Um, I think us working with regional partners is a benefit to our community. And uh, with that, I'll let Commissioner Netherland off the hook for the million-dollar comment. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. What else you got, Loretta?
All right, so next up, Mike is here to talk about a new paint striper purchase. We tried to rope um John Ronald and Pete in, the folks that are doing all the hard work and sourcing and looking at options. Um, but I don't see them. I think they're hiding. So Mike's on.
Good morning. Uh, Public Works Department liked to purchase a new paint striping truck. It's the M R L Model One Eighty A A Air Atomizer Paint Stripper, woo. And uh, this machine would, uh, this purchase would eliminate the need for uh annual uh contracts with external vendors. Uh, that would result in long-term uh cost-saving for us because the price of, of striping has went way up. Uh, we would also have greater control over scheduling, when we stripe and how, how much we stripe. So we do everything in-house uh with this striper. And so uh, we think it's really gonna be a benefit for us. So the paint striper truck is about four hundred and ten thousand, a little bit more than that. In two thousand twenty-five, we already have budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand for striping. If we take, we'd like to propose taking two hundred thousand of that and put it towards the truck. The remaining two hundred and fifty thousand would buy the paint that we need to stripe our, our county. And then take the rest of the money out of ER and R, which is about two hundred thousand dollars uh for like a short-term loan. Um, and then reimburse ER and R in two thousand twenty-six.
Would it have to be a short-term loan?
It wouldn't be, no. I'm just calling it that. It would just take it out of ER and R and then re- Rhodes would reimburse it in two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, but uh, Loretta, does Rhodes have to reimburse it? It's already, ER and R is already part of Rhodes. We can't just take it out of the ER and R and leave that in the programming?
It, it can be done that way, yes.
It could.
Is there a shortfall that we'd be looking at if we did it?
Yeah, that's, yes, that's why Mike is recommending doing it the way that we're doing it.
What's the shortfall, Mike?
The way we'd like to do is because we already have it, that where we have the four hundred and fifty thousand already budgeted, then we wouldn't, it wouldn't be uh, uh, another impact to our Rhodes budget or ER and R. The paint striping budget would actually pay for it in two years.
But we are gonna have to still pay for these employees to do it. So it, it's not like we're gonna be awash. That's why I'm wondering, why can't we just leave the money where it is? Instead of pay it back and just, because I'd like to see you start eventually, Mike, uh although I'm not for keep expanding, that's the opposite of everything I ever want. But we've been taking on a lot of things internally. I've been watching it and I'm, I'm proud of it. I'm not, but eventually uh that means we're gonna suffer on things like uh maintenance of other things because the employees are doing other things. I was wondering that myself this year because going through and looking at the roads, if we're cutting back on maintenance a little bit in order to do all the other projects, at what point do we consider bringing on a few more staff because we're taking on a lot? I wouldn't consider it an expansion as much as changing it to be in-house compared to contracting out.
Yeah, and Mike, I know that you and Jeremy and the team, John and folks have been looking at what is the, the person effort? And what is the right mix of people? Um, so we're looking at what, two, two and a half weeks?
Yeah, this, this would be, we would set this up for, typically, we would want to stripe in what, August or September? And it would be, uh, it's a three-man operation, so we got a driver and two painters. And then you would have a follow rig behind that uh, uh, carrying totes of paint around and putting them at strategic locations. So you'd have to have four to five people for a period of about three weeks' time, yes.
And then my statement though is also based on what I've watched you do when it comes to the culverts and everything else. We have staff doing things they've never done before, which they're proud to do too, by the way. They love that they've learned to expand uh what they do, how they do it. Uh, I'm just starting to notice of eventually this gonna need uh to either bring somebody on or we have to focus more on maintenance again and won't have the time to do some of those things.
Well, the type of, type of maintenance that we're doing now is, is, is what we call or I call permanent maintenance. And others, instead of just fixing something and putting it back, because there's a actually repair it permanently to where we don't have to come back and fix that spot again. And so um, we're, we're, we're doing quite well uh with the staff that we have. They've all embraced it. And uh, and we have talked about expanding numbers. I'm just, I just like to run lean. So there is a need, yes, we will bring, we'll come back to you and, and, and ask for that.
I appreciate that. So uh, if this is the way you want to do it, I'll be supportive of it. Uh, if you don't think we need the money in the budget for uh future uh employment, then I'll go along with it. If you want to take uh ER and R, Com- Commissioner Shutey.
Uh, yeah, I'm supportive of this, and I just, I'll also note that the commission has created a significant uh reserve in, in Public Works's Road Fund. I think we're up to, what, six million dollars now in, in Road for Economic Development Fund? And so that's a burden that the commission has placed on the road fund, not the other way around. And so there is some flexibility there if we do get into um, you know, uh, capacity issues. So I trust uh Loretta and Mike to monitor that and, and let us know what they need. Well, let the commission know what they need uh in order to be successful on the maintenance side of the program as well. So I'm good moving forward on this, and then I will have a paint striping question for you later on in the briefing when we get to that point.
As, as will I. There's been a busy week for paint striping.
Probably the same, it's probably the same question. So I mean, maybe we just get into it a little bit right now. So I received, I, I know there had been some social media chatter over the past several days, um, as well as an email that I received about uh, a couple of the roads um in, in different areas of the county and, and the state of our, our lines on those roads. And so just, uh, you know, I'll forward you the email that I got. I think it's the most concise um explanation of things. But uh, definitely some concerns about the visibility of lines on McEwen Prairie and Alton Agate. So just hoping, I'll send you, like I said, I'll send you that, but just for maybe a quick update on kind of where we are with the striking program this year. Um, and, and kind of where you all see, you know, some areas that um, you know, you've hit so that we can have some anticipation.
This is Lee said at the treasurer's office. I just wanted to jump in because I had seen that there was a internal loan component to this. And so I wanted to be sure if that does move forward, it goes to the finance committee and all of that. So we would need to see that if in fact there is a loan from ER and R um, to the road department for this. So that's a component that would need to come to the finance committee and then the commissioners for approval.
Thank you, Lisa. So Loretta, uh, you understand how that works? I, I saw you shaking your head as, as do I. Uh, can you go ahead and continue uh with Commissioner Shutey's?
Uh, I just forwarded you both, uh, Loretta and Mike, the email that I got, so.
Yeah, it could be the same. Um, I know the Commissioner Netherland received a similar email, possibly.
I got a couple of them. I got about a half a dozen calls.
Yeah.
It's been a busy week while I was in New York. I must have missed one heck of a storm, that's all I can say.
Yeah, okay.
So where, where are we at on our striping? What, uh, did we do less this year? Was there an issue that occurred?
Absolutely.
Explain that to us, so that we can explain it to them.
So we um went out to contract as we do every year, right, Mike? And typically, we try to um alternate where we're striping and do about half of the county. Mike, correct me, maybe I'll, I'll just turn it over to Mike, but basically half the county each year. And every other year, basically, we've, we've, every two years, we're striping the entire county. And we put this out to contract. Um, as Mike puts it, we're kind of the last small pickins. And so um, there's only so many striping companies that are available to do this work. And we're at the end of the line.
And that's why we're buying the striping truck.
Absolutely, that's why we're buying the striping truck. And so this year, um, they, basically, the striping company was not able to complete what was in the contract. And our crew actually was out on what I would best describe as a lawnmower, striping. And they striped, what, fifty miles of road, Mike? Um, so we did as much as we could, and of course, it's temperature and weather dependent. Um, and so we're done striping for the season, but that's exactly why we're buying the striper. Um, control of our own destiny and cost both. And Mike touched on the cost. We, they've nearly doubled in the last two years, Mike, for our striping contracts.
Do we have any recourse against this company?
We do not under the contract. We um basically were calling on a daily basis. We um, we did not have penalties, if you will, in the contract. Um, we've had no need necessarily for that in the past.
We only paid them for what they did, correct?
Correct, yes. Yes.
And uh, I, I understand we have the temperature issue when it comes to asphalt and stuff. What is the temperature for future knowledge of my brain when it comes to paint striping?
Well, it's, it's wet and temperature, if I recall, yeah.
Sixty degrees is what you want the ground surface to be.
Okay.
And dry?
And dry.
Hmm, yes.
What is the uh typically, like, what is the uh, the lifespan or essentially of a, of your striping? Is it every other year? I mean, you said you do have, you, you try to do half the county, but is that about the useful lifespan of, of that painter?
Yeah, and it just depends on the traffic and the winter. You know, if you have a lot of snow, salt, ice, uh, sand, you know, um, snowplows, you know, that kind of activity. So it, it, it depends on, and, and the smoothness of the surface itself too. Because if it's a, you know, if it's out of sorts road, it'll get uh tore up faster and stuff. And what is, it actually isn't the paint itself, it's the beads, the glass beads that are on the paint that really gives you the reflectivity. And so once you just scratch them off, the, the, the paint can still be there, it just won't reflect. So, so yeah, a couple of years, two, three years. On our O nine roads, you could say five, six, seven, eight years. You know, our lower, lower volume roads.
In the uh, in, in, in the email that I forwarded you, um, if uh, if you could just write back and let me know the last time those areas were striped, that'd be super helpful and then.
I can almost guarantee you they were, they were striped last year. They did not get striped this year. I just checked on that this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, do the same for the several emails I sent you as well. And if you don't mind, respond to them.
Yeah, and I believe that um they've responded to a previous striping. Um, the previous striping questions.
It um, given, I mean, it's rare that we get such consistent kind of coordinated messaging on an issue um, like this, but it, it might be helpful for Public Works to put together a quick statement of where things is and, and put that out on, on our social media at least.
Yeah.
Let folks know.
Yep.
And then what, kind of what the plan is going forward.
Will do follow it. They do pay attention to it, so please do that. The uh email that Commissioner Shutey sent you has said, uh, one of the same as the ones I sent you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it is.
So what, what else you got?
All right, and then um, next up, Commissioners, in your packet, you saw some letters for your signature regarding the um requests for consultation from tribes. And based on our um, basically talking with um some of them and the city and where they're at in their consultation process, I made some revisions to a draft that you had previously reviewed. And um, if this looks okay, I would ask for your signature. And if it does not look okay, please let me know what modifications you'd like to see and we'll get that cleaned up.
I don't have mine on computer, it's all hand, and I don't see it from.
Look, page fifty-seven of the packet. What was the, the difference?
Um, it was basically um saying that the consultation was initiated with the city of Bremerton and that um, they would be the ones hosting any meetings. However, also noting that when we start our um expansion, our own expansion process, that we will be initiating tribal consultation also. So in other words, tribes will have um two, two opportunities at a minimum to um have formal consultation conversations with us.
So I have no problem with uh your, your letter that you're putting out there, but understand my position, at least on this. When the tribes ask us for a meeting, regardless of if it's a three-party or we'll meet with a, another entity or deal with another entity, uh, I've never, we've never denied them. So I don't see us, us just putting that off to them. Uh, they could do both. They put it out there and we still meet with them.
Yep.
That's how I look at it. So I'd like to make sure that we reach out and say, if you want to meet, we're help, happy to meet with you.
Yeah.
Proper channel might be for that, but we're still happy to meet.
Yep.
Commissioner Shutey, are you in the same position or do you have a different belief on that?
Uh, yeah, no, I'm fine with uh, Loretta, I'm fine with the letters and um, providing opportunities to meet with the commission in the future.
Okay. Mark, are you seeing anything that needs some tweaking?
No, I thought you did a good job of expla- explaining it. Um, I did talk to the Squaxen tribe and so um, verbally told them the same thing that the letter is, is telling them, but super important for getting it in front of the, the tribal elders or the, the tribal chair.
Yeah.
Listen, I feel that we are open to still meet with them just regardless of, we can have those discussions. I just want to make sure that we're still there.
Yep.
Matter of fact, see if they'll invite us to their house and see if they'll uh treated us as well as they did that first time. Man, that was good. They, they gave us king crab and everything. We gave them hot dogs. I don't think they're gonna want to come back.
All right, we gotta step up our game.
We can't afford king crab.
Approve our hosting skills.
Yeah, no, we were limited. Uh, Kevin, do you remember that conversation? Weren't we limited to what we could do, what we were allowed to do at the time?
Um, I think we've always limited what we do.
Yeah, but I meant, we were literally told we can't, we have to only do a certain amount.
Yeah, I guess that's the interpretation of things, so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Commissioner, we have some discussion items, and I think if it's okay with you, I'll jump order and do the F cap grant business and then Richards, well, actually, yeah, and then Richards report on some capital improvement purchases we've completed.
Okay.
If that's all right. So the F cap grant, um, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's the Flood Control Account Assistance Program. And this has been a great program through the years that is aimed primarily at flood. Um, it was unfunded for several years. Um, it was unfunded for several years, but in the last uh session and this session, it was actually re-refunded and so it's a cool program. Um. I'm, so the notice of intent to apply is due by the end of the month. Um, funds aren't available until mid-year and then it's a two-year program. And a couple of things came to mind for me. Uh, one would be updating the comprehensive flood zone um plan for the Skokomish Valley. So I reached out to Evan Bowder and to John Taylor and Kel to see if that seems like a a good thing to do. And um the bulk of the work would need to be in twenty twenty-six and twenty-seven, simply because nobody's plugged that into a work program, if that's something the commissioners would like to entertain. But that's that's one possibility and the other is just kind of thinking, they also have a flood emergency grant program, so maybe just kind of keeping um, uh, an application on the ready for some of our our frequently flooded areas, which obviously the Skokomish is is one of those locations. So that's kind of it. In the long and short of it, commissioners, I think what I'm asking is if it seems reasonable, at least um throwing a notice of intent in, and then we can work out the details on what exactly we're applying and who's lead and all those good things. So thoughts?
Yeah, I I absolutely would um pursue this funding. Uh, I think if you, you know, even if you get the placeholder in with the notice of intent and continue to evaluate it, but I think it's a great opportunity to kind of reevaluate what the plan is for the valley and kind of get those partners together that we need in order to be successful uh out there. So I I'm I'm all for it.
Seems like a no-brainer to me, so like I said.
Okay.
Is there a match requirement, Loretta?
There is a match.
Oh, there it is, twenty-five percent.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. All right, um, if there are no other questions about that one, I'll have jump to Richard to talk about some exciting purchases for our utilities.
Morning commissioners. These are exciting to me, at at least um as as you may know, Belfair was not in the best shape uh a few years back. And we've been working our tails off to get it up to speed. We're real, real, real close. Uh, as you know, we had a freeze damage this year. We were planning on doing our SCADA system anyway, so that just kind of sped that process up. SCADA system's been replaced. Uh, we did brain surgery last month and it worked out great. Uh, so that part of it's been done. Also in our our capital improvement plan for Belfair, we were gonna replace all the sensors and controllers, which are the outer parts of the SCADA system. And we had quite a bit of money actually set aside to do that. So happy we uh hired Ralph. Ralph was took the time and put together a uh a proposal to send out to all the different vendors. Um, did a great job. Dissolved oxygen probe, all the probes. We had seventy-five grand in there to do that. Uh, I think we spent thirty-nine. So he saved us quite a bit on that. We had feed forward pumps, which are keep that plant running, uh, keep pushing the flow the flow through the plant. We were, we had thirty-five grand set for that. Uh, with tax and shipping and installation, they came to thirty-nine thousand. So it was a little more than I planned for, but still well within there. Uh, also with that, we were gonna replace just two airflow actuators. Uh, Ralph got, did another great job. He he ran these down and was able to get them bid out and we replaced all three actuators that were there, so they're all exactly the same. And so basically, Belfair is like a a month away from being back to brand new. But so happy with that. And then very similar for for North Bay. We had a a couple of things going on there that we're in the middle of a general sewer plan, so some of the things that were on my capital improvement plan, we are gonna have to delay for the results of the capital of of the general sewer plan. So we didn't run pursuing those, but since we were already doing probes and sensors and controllers, that was in the budget. Ran those to ground um as as well as uh we were able to replace the the uh level sensors for each side, for each sequencing batch reactor. That wasn't even on my radar. They were failed. Able to get all the, all the sensors, probes, controllers replaced at North Bay uh for thirty-two thousand. I had seventy-five thousand budgeted, so thank goodness for Ralph and his time to run these to ground. He he's a a an asset to us. He brought skills that the last uh two managers I had out there did not have. So this is it's been a a really great thing for me and for the utilities and the staff out there.
Okay, Commissioner Shuji?
All sounds really good. Sounds like Ralph is is uh doing a great job for us already early on, so hopefully that provides a little bit of relief for you too, Richard, but uh that all, those are all good updates.
Yeah, it it's definitely a provided relief for me.
More more peace of mind. And commissioners, you've been fantastically supportive of making these investments and we just, we just really thank you. It's um very helpful for all, everyone throughout the line um to understand that there is the funds and obviously the support and interest, and that's huge. So forgive our wild excitement over wastewater things, but we are. Okay, um, so then last up, actually, it's a a couple of things. Um. I didn't have the discussion item, but in your packet, you've got all of the code revisions um that we've got the hearing for tomorrow in the packet. And then also Stephanie and Richard updated, we've been providing monthly updates on what the water um consumption is for both Beards Cove and for Russell Wood and where we sit and and how that looks for potential future revenue when we go live next month already for our tiered rate system. So wanted to spend a little bit of time just to make sure that commissioners have all questions answered um regarding the hearing tomorrow and wanted to touch a little bit on chapter seventeen. But then also, if you have any questions about the uh water system and the tiered rates. So maybe the water system and tiered rate business first.
So you believe that we are now in a position to where our numbers are true? Uh, we've communicated with everybody that's gonna have the greatest impact?
Yes.
Um. Richard has made sure that the water is cleaned up and the pressure is good uh in Russell Wood, because I'm looking at them all holistically right now. And and we've fulfilled all the promises that we made uh going into this with the people we met with.
Yes.
Commissioner Shuji?
Yeah, this is what we voted for, so I think um you guys are ready to implement and execute on what the commission told you we wanted you to do.
Yeah, it's been a ton of work on our finance team's side, um, so hats off and huge thanks to the effort it's taken to set up all of these tiers. That's no small effort. And working with our our um contractors on the billing side. Um, I know that there's still gonna be some challenges. We've got a couple of folks that are despite receiving the notice that you will have a very high water bill, have had um trouble either funding a repair to the water line or basically that. And although we've referred these folks to people for outside assistance, it still hasn't happened, so we just want to make commissioners aware that there are gonna be a couple people that are gonna have very, very high bills and um we're doing our best to try and figure out to hook them up with the right resources to to get that resolved.
And we've been going, you know, that's reason for my questions. We've been going through this quite a while and I'm aware of all these things that we've had issues with. But at the same time, uh perfection is not possible uh without the other side working with us. And I just want to make sure that we did as much as we can to get as close to perfection as possible, because there was some pretty bad situations here, as we talked about, Richard, uh, about the uh Russell Wood and the water, the quality, all like that, but I know that our staff has been doing, I just want to make sure there's, if there's anything left out there that you think we should be truly aware of and should hold off, now's the time to tell us. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Sure, yeah.
But I've seen you've been taking on the load of each and every part of it, so.
Last call, Richard, anything hanging out there? I know you've been out on a regular basis. Our team's been out on a regular basis, particularly on the the pressure and water quality sides. And there are still, again, one or two folks that they've got some things going on, but it's a puzzle still, but um I don't think it's anything that are the the utility could or should be doing relating to those particular situations.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, there's you know, we can't go on their uh on their property and fix leaks for them. That's that's, it drives you crazy. Um, and I don't, I said, we were, Wendy's referred them to Community Action Council, Humana- Habitat for Humanity, um built uh Master Builders Association, just anybody that could possibly help them in any way. I, you know, I don't know.
So now, I was being a poor commissioner, we dealt with water and stuff like that, and I do know that there is a possibility of a one-time every three years forgiveness. Uh, does that uh apply in this situation if they were to get it done and get it fixed?
So that's a great leading question to the code. We have not built that into the code commissioners, but I think that is something that we would all recommend to have in the code, that if you had a high water bill and um fixed it immediately, submitted documentation that you fixed it, that we would credit back that excessive um consumption. And I don't know if Steph's on here, but she's done some great research about how other utilities do that. Some of them are, they credit fifty percent, some credit the entire amount, but um absolutely something that we would recommend, Commissioner.
I definitely think it should be there, but uh the ones I was a a part of, the commission actually made the decision on what partner or how. And they also had it a bell for water at the time, uh, with the same way with the commissions that were making the decisions, but I also know that the state out limits. Uh, it can only be done, I believe it was once every three years or something like that. Uh, you can't have it twice. So you come in and you get twenty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
Take it off your bill, but then you have a break and it's twelve hundred, you're screwed.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we were to do something like that, I want to make sure that that's as clear as a bell. Now, if they take advantage of it once, but find out also if it's three years, if five years. I don't think it was lifetime.
Yeah, no, I don't believe so. And I think that um Belfair Water is one per year or possibly every two. Um.
I know the city of Olympia is that way, and I and I believe the city of Shelton is too. They do it once a year, but it's just exactly as Loretta described, is you got a problem, you uh fixed it and you bring in a receipt from a you know, somebody that's allowing to fix things like that, and and then uh you give them a credit for that money. But it only happens once a year, and it and I think it's not codified, but it's most likely in policy.
Well, please look into this state, because I'm pretty, again, I'm I'm going off of twenty years ago. But I'm pretty sure the state at the time had a requirement that you could only do it once, uh af- after a certain amount. It may not be the same thing you're talking about, a a price adjustment or what. You had a forgiveness of a major event once every two or three years, but it could have changed, but they're so tight on water, I doubt if they relaxed it, it'd go the other way.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether that would be through the UTC um regulating that. I, it's, yeah, that we'll we'll look, Commissioner.
Okay.
Okay, so is that something then, I guess what we'll do, we'll just, as we, right now, we'll not worry about codifying it, but bring forward on case-by-case basis and then um take a look whether.
Well, I think you should worry about codifying it at some point. If if we know it and it's happening, might as well be putting it in where it needs to go.
Yeah. And keep it simple.
Especially in this situation, we may have somebody that is coming up that is, and besides that, you don't want staff making those decisions. That that's gotta be a code, what I'm thinking about, it has to be a code somewhere or some type of 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 requirement. That can't just be, especially when it comes to water, they don't allow it. So let's double check that, but uh we could have a situation where somebody's coming to us with two, three thousand dollars.
Absolutely. And in the one case that I'm thinking of, that is likely to be the case.
Yeah, and I, for those that they are listening, we wish we could, but we can't spend our uh the county's money for your personal property, we just can't.
Yep.
Commissioner Shuji, comments, questions?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think I think having having some process outlined in code is probably safest for everybody. Um take some of the guesswork out of it. And I guess the other thing is, and I'm sure you're already doing this, but um just continuing to document when you've uh referred those customers to outside services and things like that, just so that we have uh in case they do come back and and ask for some kind of leniency on the bill, that we can also demonstrate that we've tried to connect them with with resources to help fix the problem.
Yeah. Now, there there was one other thing we haven't discussed, Loretta. Uh, we did create at one point for the sewer uh the ability to get them a an eternal loan uh for putting in the pipes and stuff like that. We did that and we gave them ten years to pay it.
Right. So that though was with a grant, so that was seed money, right, that we received from um ecology that allowed us. So we had an outside revenue source essentially that let us do that.
Could there be a few dollars in ARPA that might uh be able to work for seed? Mark, can you just take a look at that? And then if it isn't used, well, no, because the ARPA, it has to be spent, so there's
ARPA, remember, ARPA had to be obligated by the end of twenty twenty-four, so.
Yeah. No, that's not gonna happen, but
Whatever, whatever money we had left, we actually moved into the general fund and uh for any project that was not obligated and and so uh, so we do have money in the general fund specifically for some things, but.
Yeah, but I think it might be, um, I mean, something we could check into is basically a revolving loan from Department of Health.
Yeah, that's a smart.
That would be a the most likely source, I believe.
So yeah, please look into that, because that may, we although we're connected with all these people, they may not be able to help either. So if we find this one way of be able to do it.
Yeah, we were really hopeful. I was really hopeful and didn't get the greatest response from Community Action Council in terms of providing some support to individuals that are experiencing these leaks and I I guess my concern is is that there's a program in there that helps individuals pay utility bills so that they um don't lose service, uh yet. You know, if 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 they could assist with the the fixing of leaks like this, um, it would prevent that individual from ever needing to come to Community Action Council for that sustained supplemental support.
Well, you just described government in a whole. That always works. Okay, what else you got?
Okay, uh, I wanna, if it's all right, commissioners, touch briefly on um the hearing tomorrow. And in particular, last last briefing, we talked about chapters two and three, and again, thank you for the audit committee's assistance and review and providing comment. Chapter seventeen, we sent out to the health department and planning, because there are planning and health department aspects to that as well. And um a couple of things that we are highlighting in our briefing packet today. And that is, um I can pull this up real quick. In seventeen, that there is a new um WAC going into effect in April that talks about That talks about how, where and when uh you need to connect to sewer. And you may recall that way back when we had a five hundred foot. Distance, if you were within five hundred feet, the WAC actually says two hundred feet. And in during the last session, there was more specificity about where that two hundred feet is measured from. And um. The ability to, it's not just two hundred feet from the most direct line, it's the most um. Effective way to get sewer service to the the structure. So we revised the language in seventeen to be consistent with the new WAC. And then the other thing that we did, we revised some criterion requirements. Where onsite septics were allowed for existing lots of record. And then the CFC, so right now. We require that if an onsite septic system is approved within the the UGA. You still pay the capital facilities charge. And if sewer is not available within ten years, then we pay that CFC back to the property owner plus interest. And we're. We are proposing to revise that to say that no CFC is paid if a septic system is approved. But in lieu of that, there is a document recorded with the that goes with the property. That says when sewer is available, you will connect and you will have a CFC charge and pay that at that time. And then finally, um there was language in the existing code that designates the county. As the operator of any large onsite septic systems that are approved. And we're recommending that that be removed as well. So those are kind of the um highlights of what is being proposed to be revised in. Chapter seventeen.
So uh the the you the changing of the verbiage to uh allow. Uh or acquire hookup when. You're actually able to, reflecting back to the Union River where we had a parcel that was. Just over the river, but they would have actually had to try to go through and under over the river in order to make that happen. And we all knew and agreed that that wasn't even realistic. Sorry about that, so that that is one of the examples for that, the ten year, the idea, I've been one of the ones that was working with Loretta over the years on that. It in Belfair, it's not even realistic, they're they're paying for it in areas that we know the sewer is not even gonna be in twenty years, let alone ten years. But so we have to collect it, we have to watch it, we have to take care of that money, and then we have to pay back the interest, it didn't make any sense whatsoever. Uh and it just became imperative to getting things built, and the idea of uh. Your last point about uh removing this requirement uh for us, I never had that conversation with you, but I sure appreciated what I heard you say. Uh to take us off that liability and the requirement that we would operate it uh. I'm a big fan of uh of you protecting us by getting rid of that out of there.
And that was kind of a surprise, you know, you read code, you read code, think it's, you know, whatever, and then it's like, oh, what? That says what?
Commissioner Shu.
Yeah, good changes, um just uh two questions, one kind of related, uh one related for sure. So we had some correspondence over the past week about the maps reference. Did you mention that and then or what's what are your kind of thoughts on? Referring to the most current mapping um for the UGA versus maybe with removing the reference to mapping.
Yeah, I, Richard and I are both on the same page about recommending just removing any reference to a map. Essentially, our 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 sewer plans, those are the, whatever is approved by ecology is the official document. And this this allows for more flexibility, right, so if um development comes along and they have a better plan. As opposed to what we have pre-laid out, you know, twenty years ago, um then. It it allows us the flexibility to go with a better plan, so.
Well, I think that kind of kind of speaks to what Commissioner Neller was saying in terms of, you know, places where we know we're not gonna serve in. Ten, twenty years and and things like that, it's just. To have it be a little bit less prescriptive is probably to our benefit, so and the communities. Um and then I think the the other question is, just so with our with where our current extension is. Um in the northern part of the UGA.
Yes.
And thinking about um connections there.
Yes.
What is the process for notifying folks who may be within that? Certain threshold of proximity to the line and. Saying, you know, sewer is available, it's, you know, available for connection and how do we kind of pursue that?
Yeah, so this morning, um if I could do a quick screen share, commissioners. Just to give you an idea. So I don't know if you can see my.
Yes.
Hovering down here on the bottom, this is the current alignment of the new sewer extension. And right here is the floral business, oh, sorry, right here. And you can see this blue line, um th- this red is the stub out. Proximate stub out from the the building and um their drain field area. So you would be measuring from the stub from the structure, and you can see the shortest route is maybe about five hundred feet. So outside the two hundred foot distance. And then here, just running down the property line is five hundred and eighty. So this gets to also, you know, what's the most feasible, right, so there's a well radius in here somewhere. You need to make sure that those lines are outside that that well radius. Um is it feasible, we don't, you know, what what else is here, but anyway. Gives you an idea about what we need to look at in terms of. How connections are made, and then in this case too, where's the nearest manhole to tie into um into that. Um into our trunk line. So there's one example, um I'm not sure if I've got. Yep, okay, and here's the the pump station, and here is the Sozo Church. And same thing, their drain field is out here front, um close to SR three stub in the front of the the building. And in this case, I think we're about three hundred feet um to the pump station. So the folks are outside um that two hundred foot distance. But nonetheless, we plan to send a letter to all of those properties along that that reach. And let them know that sewer is there and available and. Um if they have interest in connecting, because it may be cost effective for them, especially if they're considering expansion. Um or even on the parcels that are vacant, um whether they want to develop. So we'll we'll say, welcome, we're in the neighborhood, if you have some interest, let us know, and we'll. Share details on how to get connected.
Thank you.
I I'm a little uh concerned on that one, the reason why is historically, first, I wanna go back to the map thing that uh. Commissioner Shu was talking about, uh I wanna agree that uh I think that. Doing away with that is the best, I wanna say with caveat, now, I actually believed in the maps, thought it was a great thing, and we had a plan that was put together by the. Past commissioners before I came in, but the the commission, even though I was supportive, voted against that. Now, here's the thing, it's interesting how life goes on. They voted against it, so now I think if we continue to keep it, it puts us at a liability that we shouldn't have. I'm not saying right or wrong that the commission did it, but it happened, so now we have to. Address it that way, and and I think keeping the map around uh was something that's not even in play anymore. Is more of a liability than it is anything else. So I wanna to to weigh in with the same belief of it's time to move on, I think. Uh the line, the property line, it used to, it was always from property line, I'm not sure of the impact that's gonna happen if we start saying. From stub out, because when they build the home, they're supposed to put the stub, well. Then we would start dictating the stub needs to be here and here and here, but their drain field's not here. So I don't know, uh that one there, I'm not exactly sure of, because the whole idea when they get these things on is to eventually hook up to it. Especially if it's new construction, and I think new construction still needs to be, you know, from property line.
Well, that would be something to take up with the state legislature.
Well, no, uh we still have ours to be, just because they changed something to allow for it to be uh. Uh less restrictive does not mean we have to, as you know, we used to have it at five hundred feet. So I don't wanna get us confused that because they changed the WAC that our rules have to change, that isn't accurate. And it's WAC, not the RCW to top it off, so.
Yes. Um we'll do a little bit further homework, commissioners, with um.
Please do.
With the Health Department and with Tim on that.
All right, what else you got for us?
I believe that is it, Richard, is there anything else that we want or need to point out about code amendments? Prior to the hearing?
No, I that's just, I mean, I think you hit the high points, the rest is just kind of cleaning it up and make it more readable.
Yeah, the whole goal is to make sure that we are consistent in our application. Um and making sure that when our customers have questions about how we're applying it. That the code is clearly spelling out process for us and and aiding in that consistent application.
Well, a little pat on the back though too, because even though it didn't, you've been helping some of the customers, the clientele up in North Mason. When you knew that it was just inappropriate, the position that we were putting them in, you've been stepping outside the box to be able to help them find solutions. Such as the hookups on something you knew was never gonna be hooked up, and the charges for it and stuff uh. Uh so I I wanna thank you for that, because finding a way to help them is our main goal anyway.
Yeah, and.
You did a little research on that, Loretta, in terms of how many um how many people. That we have charged to eventually hook up but may not. I mean, we currently still don't have sewer in the area, right, and was it four?
I wanna say it's closer to six or seven, and this was um Michelle and Donna. Alan Stephanie digging up and basically looking at all of our um customers that have paid those CFCs or prepaid. And just ballparky, I think it's around seventy thousand dollars. So commissioners, if we go ahead and approve this, we will be following up shortly after with a. An an action um to consider refunding ahead and 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 getting that money back to the the customers. So we're not.
As we should, and we shouldn't have to watch it and and uh take care of it, account for that money forever, knowing we're not gonna do it, so. It's a win-win. Commissioner Shu, anything else on this?
Uh no, looking forward to the hearing tomorrow, great job.
Same here.
Uh that is it on our list, commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Shu, any other questions for uh public works?
Uh not from me at the moment.
And you already answered mine when it comes to the stripe and everything, so that's the questions that I had. Uh and we are meeting uh here shortly out there as well. And uh look forward to that, uh you know, uh the one that has the knowledge. I don't know that she's gonna be there, I don't think she will, but Bonnie has the knowledge when it came to the water. Uh and what was required and where that information was stored, one of the beautiful things about government, there could be a law. And it could be under one of the thirty different departments that you don't know where it's at. Uh so once you find it, you hold on to that information, because it may be someplace you won't go back to again. So but she's the one that I remember during those times that that showed us some of that.
Great.
All right, uh anything further? Hearing none, thank you, that brings us back uh to the other uh Commissioner Shu. Uh would you like to end this one for us, or what are you thinking?
Uh yeah, move adjourned.
I will second, hearing no objection, we are adjourned, see you tomorrow.
Thanks, everybody.